You may want to move your mic closer to your mouth.
If everybody could be further mic on and please talk into the mic so that we can hear you on the radio.
If you, you should see a green light on. Do you see it?
There we go.
Hi, that's the one.
There we are.
Whoa.
All right.
My nerves.
Welcome. Hey Emily, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Welcome, welcome. We'll have some swearing in here shortly. All right, let's call the meeting to order. Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Lee's going to offer invocation.
It will look at us tonight with every statement from the town. I will have leaders on the town, police department, please put a hand on them.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Welcome to the Andor Planning Board Meeting. We have some new members here in attendance. I want to welcome them and some other folks here. Has anyone had a chance to look over the planning board minutes from January 10th meeting?
Yes.
And we have a motion to approve on...
Can you move your mic just a little bit closer to your, is it on?
There we go.
Okay, there you go. Try again.
I make motion. Do we need a second on that or do we, we have a motion, all in favor of approving the minutes from January 10th? Aye.
Aye.
All right. And has anyone had a chance to consider, read the agenda for tonight's meeting? And perhaps have a motion? All right.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Looks like that's unanimous there. Approved.
I got a question. Who signs the minutes now?
The clerk's gonna address that.
Okay, all right. All right. And we are here now at new business and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Calhoun or the clerk, excuse me. Whichever way it needs to go.
I'll swear the new members.
All right. Sounds fantastic.
Lee, our reappointee and Emily and Trish.
Do you want him at the podium?
Yep.
Okay. Right there. Whoa, 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 right there.
Right hand up and just we can all, we can all say it at the same time. I state your name.
Lee Marshall.
You solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office without favor or prejudice, according to the best of my skill and ability and according to the law as a member of the Town of Andor Planning Board.
All right, congratulations. All right. We appreciate you being willing to serve the town. Will they be joining us this evening?
I was gonna say, you should join up here, have a seat.
Come on up either way. Here we have, I believe Emily's.
Yep.
All right, come on in. Emily, welcome. Get to know us here. Lee, Sam, Robert, Haley, Myron.
How are you doing?
We won't quiz you on everyone's names there, but you can...
No.
It is a bit easier than I thought. All right.
Turn this off.
Read the books. So we have had the swearing in. And we will now move next to annual election of officers.
Which if you don't mind, I'd like to say something to you about that. The, excuse me, the terms of office for officers on the planning board, excuse me, expires technically speaking on the last day of the year. So it's supposed to be a January planning board event. So the positions that are voted on tonight will expire at the January meeting of next year. So there will be an election of officers on that date. It's an annual. And the positions that are open are chair and vice chair. Okay. Take it away.
Just nominations from the board. If anybody wants to speak up and say a nomination, then you guys can vote on it.
I nominate Robert for chair.
All right.
There's a nomination on the floor if everybody wants to vote on Robert being chair.
All right. Are you all in favor of that approving me as the chair? Raise your hand. All right.
Unanimous.
Unanimous? All right, fantastic. And do we have a nomination for vice chairman?
I nominate Haley.
Me? I'm trying to nominate.
All right, we have a nomination on the floor for Haley. All in favor? All right. Unanimous? Thank you. I don't, are there any other positions we need to fill?
That's got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'll turn the meeting over to you, our director.
Yes, all right. Good evening. We don't have a lot on the agenda tonight, but I did want to turn you all's attention to the part of your packet. It's also up here on the screen. It's has to do with mobile food vendors. I gave a report to the Town Board of Commissioners at I believe last month's meeting. It's starting to feel like maybe it was last month's. It could have been the beginning of this month. I'm not really sure. But I did give them a report and we had received a series of phone calls about a really large number of food trucks sort of showing up. The location was not fixed. They seem to be moving around fairly regularly. The particular concern that was expressed to me was that they were showing up in the park on weekends and vending food in the park. Of course, that's public property and so that's a little out there. So I pulled up our ordinance language, which is actually found in chapter nine of our Code of Ordinances. And there's a section on itinerant merchants. And it has to do with door-to-door sales and you know, the sort of people that you might find on the side of the road selling you a couch. And so, or, or fruit or produce or something like that. So if you think about the sorts of things that you might be buying when you stop at a stand set up on the side of the road. Back in the day, and I am telling my age and it's okay, that's how you sold backyard sheds. Then they got to be more like a car lot. But let me just say, back in the earlier part, it was not unusual to have somebody just show up with a truckload of those things and lay them out there. Again, furniture, if you think about, you know, I used to live very close to the beach and I'm going to say that the side of the road was just littered with the people selling shrimp and Queen Anne chairs. So anyway, this is, that's sort of itinerant merchant. It's either I'm going door-to-door selling something, I'm soliciting something, or I'm on the side of the road vending something. What we didn't have was a particular situation that addressed food trucks. And so what I brought to our Town Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry, the current permitting situation is kind of a little bit worse than what I was afraid it might be, which is that you obtain a $20 one-year permit to do itinerant or roving sales. And there's no fixed location. And the only thing in our ordinance is a really good safeguard is of course, the application requires us to kind of know who these folks are or to know who they are. But also, if you're selling something that is like a value, which of course furniture would fall into that category, that's the one that really is top of my head. These folks are forced to put up a $5,000 bond in order to assure that they are going to, you know, deliver the goods that they sell you. If it's something that happens at another time, I come to your house, I tell you I'm going to sell you a wheelbarrow or an outdoor shed, or I'm going to give you a fence and I'm coming to your house to do this door-to-door, very obviously you want me bonded in some way because if I back out, I don't do what I'm supposed to do. You need a means to, you know, there has to be some redress for my defrauding you. So as I explained to certainly one or two members of the board, but I believe I may have said it during my presentation, I'm gonna admit that I don't really remember very much about my presentation. When I was working in Selma, which was my previous role as planning director, we were asked to canvas 50 cities in North Carolina, particularly smaller cities that had a fairly large number of food trucks and to determine what we thought were some best practices for food truck vending. What the Town Board there and this particular elected board have in common is that they wanted to de-emphasize public property. Okay, I'm gonna start back just one, I'm gonna go back one step because that little thing I just said sort of triggered something that I meant to say from the beginning, which is this. This policy does not cover special events. If you are going to spring fling or some other thing or trunk or treat or anything else, some sort of battle of the bands where you have an event where there's a band and there's food and there's food trucks, this would not apply. This has nothing to do with that. This is a guy or a girl or a man or a woman or somebody who owns a mobile food vending operation. They probably charge up their mobile food truck at a commissary kitchen because there are some regulations about that that are laid out by the Health Department, Environmental Health. And these people drive to either a fixed location or in a lot of places, they sort of flip the location. Would y'all feel better if I stood up? I really can sit or stand. I'm versatile like that. You want me to stand up? I'm, I'm, I'm getting that vibe.
Let's see if you can hear me. Is this, can you hear me? Is that, okay, good. I'm even on, I'm even on camera. Yes.
Is that microphone on?
It is. I hope it is. Either that or it's, I have a remarkable, wow, okay. I was trying to, to separate the two of us, but apparently this is, these are two pieces of the same thing. Okay, so what I was gonna say is, the, the thing that made my presentation to the Board of Commissioners a little bit less direct and a little bit less instructive than I was trying to make it, was that I think right out of the box, I hadn't set the table with the idea that we are not talking about events. This has nothing to do with events. Events are their own animal. Events in our particular case are largely determined by the town or by people who apply to the town for an event. And built into your event permit is the idea you probably are gonna have food vendors. And you're gonna have an awful lot of things happening, probably in a public space, that don't have anything to do with what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is you are Food Lion and you have some guy who makes shrimp rolls or some kind of lobster thing or tacos, which seems to be the easier and cheaper method. But nevertheless, you have a thing that is for sale, that is out in your parking lot, and it acts as a draw to your business for people to go and get something that is not available inside of the store and is not available inside of a restaurant. That would be one of the stalls that is in the Food Lion complex. So y'all, y'all seeing what I'm saying? I want you to see it in your head because I want you to understand why these rules are set up this way. I, I talk about it too much and it probably irritates people that absolutely know Ann, but I'm going to tell you that where I live in North Raleigh, if you started at my house and your assignment was to go collect the name of 45 food trucks in a 15-minute period and you were driving around rather quickly in an SUV and you have someone sitting beside you is literally writing down the names of these places, you'd get 75 of them in about a 10-minute space. The former location of Kroger just off of Six Forks actually has four in the parking lot together. And they have sort of a corral of these things. And so it's sort of like a food court. It's like a food truck court. So places that have an awful lot more people and people feel like they are going to get a lot out of selling in a place like that, there's a ton of these. So certainly when you're looking for information about how to best regulate that, that would be a place where you would start out. City of Raleigh and City of Durham have some very, very strict rules and they have some very, very well orchestrated plans. But a lot of smaller towns, because I did canvas 50 towns, have some ideas that are actually very helpful. And it was those, that research that caused me to write this document initially. And I went in and I tailored it for this town's needs. So the proposal is to place it, I'm sorry, what am I looking for tonight? What I'm looking for tonight is once we've gone over this and I explain how it works, I'm looking for an endorsement that takes us over to a future Board of Commissioners meeting where this will be actually become law here. And this would be the way it's regulated. So I do want to draw your attention. It's on there. It's also on this final, I don't know how many pages. I guess it's two or three pages at the back of your packet. I want to draw your attention to it. It's a little tiresome to read it to you, but I'm going to anyway. Tiresome for you to listen to me read, not for me to be doing the reading. I could read all night. So basically, it points out here that these mobile food vendors or food trucks shall comply with the regulations of this section except for vendors associated with town-sponsored events. So we start off right off the bat saying, this is not a town-sponsored event thing. This is Wednesday night, okay? Or Tuesday or whatever. This section is not applicable to wayside stands for sale of produce or seasonal products. Again, I wanted to exclude food that is being vended on the side of the road. Some guy just drove up from Mexico. He has a bunch of cantaloupes on the back of a truck. That is not a food truck. A food truck, again, is like a restaurant where you're either taking it with you or you're sitting at a picnic table or at a cafe table or something there and you're actually consuming the food either onsite or you're doing it away. Now, so we got mobile food vendors operating at fixed locations on private property. That sentence is critical. You're in a fix, so we're gonna give you a permit to do this in one place and only one place. You're not moving. If you're moving to several places, you, you need several permits. Or there's another way to work with that. And we had a lot of that in Selma. Want to point that out. Dwayne's is the store that we tailored our regulations for. So they have a roving band of food trucks. Okay. You obtain a land use permit stipulating an expiration date not to exceed 180 days, which is six months. Copy of the zoning permit shall be posted conspicuously, conspicuously at or near the window or windows where customers pick up or order food that is being vended. So this is literally that thing with the screen in front of it where the lady or the man asks you what you want and you start telling them and they start writing it down really fast. Their permit to actually operate is supposed to be attached to the truck where we can see it. Don't get it out of here off of a clipboard and hand it to me. I want it hanging. I want to see it. And there's gonna be some other things posted on this truck, all of which are safeguards. Again, we can talk about that. Okay. So documents are required to be submitted to the planning board, planning department, excuse me, at the time a permit is applied for shall include the following. A copy of any written agreement between the mobile food vendor and the owner of the private property where mobile food vending can take place. Now, what frequently was the case over in Selma is the owner of the business, like the shopping center would get a license and then they would rotate out people because this is a six-month license. So you don't, this is not, this is not Sam Gregory's ribs. This is any food truck that wants to be where Sam's Gregory, Sam Gregory ribs is today. So if you want to do it for three months and then we want to go over to Robert's place, then Haley's gonna try her hand at it and you each have a food truck and you swap it out, as long as Food Lion has an agreement with us for a, for a permit that says, I may have food trucks there. As long as they turn in these identification pieces that are right here, we don't care. Okay. Copy of the written agreement between the mobile food vendor and the owner of the private property where it's gonna take place. Copy of the most recent inspection from Environmental Health Department that licensed the mobile food vendor. Now I'm gonna stop right there and tell you something super important because I bet you don't know this. Or if you do, then you know a lot of stuff. If you learn enough useless things, one day you may take my place. What I was, or useful. But what I was going to say is, okay, so Environmental Health Department where you live, where you load up your food truck, where you get your initial permit, could be Durham County, it could be Wake County, it could be Johnston County. When you bring your Johnston County food truck into Harney County, or in our case, you can be in Harney County or you can be in Wake County, whichever county you are sitting in where you're operating this food truck, whether it's your home base or whether it's, you're a visitor from another county, your food truck is subject to an inspection at any time of the day or night that it is in operation. If someone goes to the Health Department and files a complaint and says Myron Patterson is selling food in a food truck called Tacos R Us and I got food poisoning and I think that he's licking his fingers and sticking them in the taco mix, they can go in, tell you, show up, show you their badge and tell you they're there to do an inspection. Technically speaking, when you cross the county line, you are subject to an inspection as a condition of crossing the county line. If you are consistently ignoring food service and food handling practices that are considered standards by this state, you can be prevented from vending food in a particular county. And later on in this, you're gonna see where there's another safeguard about that. So your most recent report, Wake County for that matter, and Durham County, and quite frankly, I believe Johnston County post their food inspection reports online. You can literally click on the name of the place and it pops right up. So if you're wondering if the place you're gonna take your friends to for dinner tonight has a sanitation grade of C, you don't have to wait until you get there, or a B. I do want to warn you all that food violations are taken off in quarter point after a third violation in most counties in North Carolina. So when you go to a place that has a B, you are in the third world. You are literally eating food in Nicaragua on the side of, on the side of the road. The only way that somebody gets a really low sanitation grade that doesn't involve totally nasty practices is if their refrigerator is not cold enough or if they are not keeping the food as it's sitting out waiting to be served at a temperature that is consistent. The meat has to stay 165 degrees. I mean, think about the last thing you went to that was catered. Those people are running around grabbing little flaming things and sticking them under serving trays, not because they're dressed up for the occasion, they're doing it because they're trying to maintain a constant temperature. In food safety, there's a log and a lag time for bacterial growth and they're trying to stop the process. Took a class in restaurant grading, just so you know. Okay, a copy of the state-issued photo identification of the applicant which shall be placed on file in the Office of the Planning Director. That happens to be a file that we lock, by the way. And the reason why we say state-issued photo identification is because quite a few people say, well, what if I don't drive? Well, you're bound to have a picture ID somewhere, so please bring one. Okay, that information along with any identification or alternate food vending personnel needs to be provided if other persons will be serving the food. And then proof of liability insurance. This is literally your liability insurance because you are serving food to the public. Let's go back for a minute about the personnel. All right. Again, I'm using the names of the people in front of me. You don't have a name tag, so you're lucky. I'm not gonna call your name. But let's just say this. I go up to Sam Gregory's Ribs and I am there to get ribs. And there is a little plaque right there, very much like ours, and it says Sam is serving. Okay, I go up and you're serving. Unless your name is Samantha, ma'am, you're not Sam. So I needed to say Haley. And if it's Haley and this, if Sam takes my order and Haley's the person that gives me my food, I need to know those people. And there's a really good reason for that. There's the sanitation portion of it. There's also the liability part of it. And then at least in one place where I have done some work that involved some contract type work. We had someone selling meth from a food truck. So certainly knowing that the nice lady in there whose name really isn't Sam and it's actually Haley would be very helpful to the police. Okay, now citing requirements here, two mobile food vendors located on a lotter parcel in all commercial zoning districts at any given time, which, now that's also space provided. That is literally, if you don't have a space for two of those, plus all the things we're getting ready to go over, you can't have a one. But you could have two. Now, again, think about yourself being Food Lion. You want to put two of them over there. Tacos R Us and Sam's Rib Place. So you got those two in the parking lot with a shared area where there's some sort of tables where we can sit. Okay, if Lee comes through and he wants to take one of your places, we can switch him out. So you could have two flipping at all times. Okay? Sort of like double Dutch jump rope. Okay. If the permit is issued to the owner of the parcel, the business operating on the premises, it shall be the responsibility of permitee to ensure that no more than two mobile food vendors are operating simultaneously. Now, why, or what, what happens to them if there's really three? Well, if there's really three, your permit's invalid. And you'll notice a little bit later on, there are actual consequences. So we're going to know who you are and we're gonna know where you are. These are two things that we don't currently know about most of these folks. Now, mobile food vendors shall be located a minimum of 100 feet from the main entrance of any eating establishment or similar food service business and 100 feet from any outdoor dining area operated as a part of an eating establishment as measured from the designated location on the lotter parcel accommodating the food truck, trailer or cart. Again, why? Because if you happen to be in Napper Tandies and this is not, and by the way, you could not have one in front of theirs because that is a public parking space, that's public property. There is no private property in the front. But let's just say they had a nice rolling lawn and it was a beautiful restaurant and they were great and the prices were, were significant. And then they put, somebody wants to put a food truck in front of there and they come down to get a permit. The first thing I'm gonna do is actually take the proposed location and measure 100 feet and using GIS. And if there's another food establishment or if your seating area isn't part of your agreement of what you've agreed to do, then I'm not gonna let you set up there. You're gonna have to set up somewhere else. Again, this keeps it spaced out. It also answers that question. Gosh, how do I keep them from, you know, going, you know, taking my customers away? Well, they won't be taking your customers because they'll be 100 feet away. It's up to you to keep your people within 100 feet of your business. Mobile food vendors, food trucks, trailers and carts shall be located a minimum distance of 15 feet from any fire hydrant. I'm guessing I don't have to explain that one. Night of the fire, we don't want to have to move the truck. And again, this is a six-month permit. So your parking, you can go back and forth, but a lot of people just park it there. Okay, so mobile food vendors, food trucks, trailers, carts shall not be located within any area of the lotter parcel that impedes, endangers or interferes with pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Nothing quite like being on a sidewalk, having a walk on a really, really busy street and suddenly encountering a food truck and realizing you have to step out into traffic and get hit or go walking, trespassing in a place where you shouldn't be. So they can't block the sidewalk and they can't be in the way. Okay. Mobile food vendors, food trucks, trailers and carts shall not occupy any parking spaces required to fulfill the minimum requirements of the principal use unless the principal use is hours of operations. Do not coincide with those of the food truck business, nor shall any mobile food truck vendor occupy parking spaces that may be leased to another business and used to fulfill its minimum parking requirements. One of the things that happens is as your downtown or any central business district really starts to fill up with businesses, you begin to discover that people are sharing parking, parking lots. In fact, a great shared parking lot, to use my same example for the 85th time in this one conversation, is Food Lion. Each of those stores has a count as to how many parking spaces there have to be per square, heated square feet of the business, but it's a shared parking lot. If you're sitting in this parking space instead of this parking space, I'm not really in the nail salon's place or over here, I'm not a nail customer who's in the Food Lion parking lot. The whole parking lot is one big parking lot. So in this particular case, all they would have to do is satisfy our requirement that you have more parking spaces than you actually technically need. All right. Food trucks, trailers and carts shall not occupy any handicap accessible parking spaces specified in NC General Statute 20-37.6. That should be obvious. And yet, I can tell you that I've lost count of how many times I've seen one of these in a handicap space, particularly in downtown Raleigh near the Civic Center. Okay, operations. One freestanding sandwich board, which is a three-by-five sign with sort of a chain, you know, out here. It can also be your menu, is permitted as part of the food truck, trailer or cart vending operation. No audio amplification shall be permitted as part of the food truck, trailer or cart vending operation. Nothing quite like getting a blast of two live crew while you're trying to buy a hot dog for your grandchildren at what you think is a family establishment. So the way you keep that down and you don't violate the noise ordinance is you simply don't allow amplified music. If you want a carnival bar, use your voice. And when it gets as raspy as mine is today, it's time to quit doing that. All right. So hours of operation of food trucks, trailers and carts shall be limited to the hours between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM in all commercial zoning districts unless the property owner has obtained a special use permit from the Town of Andor allowing for extended hours. extended hours. Okay, let's talk about where I live. The food trucks are open until 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and an awful lot of them have an ABC permit, okay? That's not what I envisioned for here, but what I'm trying to tell you is, if you honestly think that nobody walks out of the Civic Center at 10:30 at night and thinks, gosh, I sure would like to have a sandwich, then I'd say you don't spend a lot of time down there. Okay, now, when open for business, the food truck, trailer, cart, or cart operator, his or her designation, shall be present at all times, except in cases of an emergency. If the food truck, trailer, cart, or operator name does not match the name on the zoning permit displayed inconspicuously at the window or windows where customers order pickup food being vendied, the name of the operator shall be displayed alongside the permit, which means you're going to have some stuff outside, and please don't tell me it's tacking up your truck. In many cases, it's a taco truck. Is it possible to make it look more tacky? I doubt it. So we're going to actually have some stuff for public safety. Okay. Now, uh, let's see, let's see, let's see, name of this person. Failure to prominently post the name of a vendor in this manner shall be viewed as a deliberate violation of the issued permit. Again, if you have 27 employees, God bless you, but the point is you need 27 name cards, and you need a roll of tape. You just literally tag it, tag it, and please don't tell me people are on break. Okay, the town's truck, trailer, cart vendor is responsible for the proper disposal of waste and trash associated with the operation. Town trash receptacles are not to be used for this purpose. Vendor shall not, shall remove all waste and trash from their approved location at the end of each day as, or as needed to maintain health and safety of the public. Again, a place that's never had food being served, and suddenly you're serving every single thing that comes with fast food or something out of a truck, we don't want a parking lot full of trash and things that are dropped and half-eaten food, and, you know, we start seeing a lot of seagulls, you're not being sanitary. All right, vendor shall keep all areas of the permitted lot free of, and clean of grease, trash, paper cups, cans, or other materials associated with the vending operation. No liquid waste or grease shall be disposed of in tree pits, storm drains, or onto the sidewalk streets, or other public space. Under no circumstances shall grease be released or disposed in the town's sanitary sewer system. Again, we have a whole program about keeping grease and oil out of our wastewater treatment, and yet someone comes to town in a taco truck, and it's like, oh, wait, rules? Okay, all equipment required for operation shall be contained or within, attached or within 20 feet of the food truck, trailer, or cart. All food preparation, storage, and sales distribution shall comply with Prickble County, State, Federal Health Department sanitary regulations. So going down to the, I'm sorry, now, just feels like a natural pause. No? No questions? All right, we'll just, we're just going to plug on. Okay, so the permits that are required, you get a land use permit, which is this permit, obtained by the property owners listed in Harnett or Wake County property tax records for any lot or parcel proposed to accommodate a food truck vending operation as a primary use. So this means a blank lot. Last place that I worked, it was this big historic house, there was a house fire that burned two houses down, and there was this big open area, they wanted to fill it up with food trucks. Okay. A house or a business is supposed to be the primary structure on any lot that we have in our jurisdiction. When you put an accessory structure, which is what this would be, on a lot by itself, which is what you would be doing here, you've got to get a land use permit that allows you to essentially set up a temporary restaurant there. That is what you're doing. You're doing commercial business, this is why this is not allowed in a residential neighborhood. Okay. Or, I'm sorry, I keep saying this is not allowed. This is what I'm proposing us not allow. Currently, it's the Wild West, you literally make it up as you go along. And it's become enough of a problem that it's coming back to my desk, so very clearly.
That's why we got a lot of food trucks in the park.
There you go. Thank you very much. That's exactly my point. All right. Okay, so, all right, let's see. A town-issued mobile food vending permit shall be obtained every 180 days or six months by the vendor or by the legal owner of the property. So that leaves it open, it can be either one. Prior to the issuance of the permit, the vendor shall provide evidence of having obtained land use permit as described in paragraph A, food vending permit from the county health, environmental health department where a mobile food vendor is licensed, unless the product being vendied is not subject to environmental health inspection. There's a couple of really good examples, ice cream cones and cotton candy do not get inspected. I, I'm not just talking about the cone, I'm talking about the stuff in it. If you serve soft-serve ice cream from a, from a food truck, it is not inspected by the health department, the same way the meat is. Not my rules. Anyway, so, so you have to make sure this is subject to that. A North Carolina sales and use certificate for collecting and paying proper sales tax if applicable, and the means for disposal of grease within an approved grease disposal facility. Now, sometimes a grease disposal facility is a really big jug or a drum. You just got to get it out of where it is, you can't dump it anywhere weird here, we're not going to do any surreptitious dumping here, and you have to take it off the property, okay? If at any time, at any time evidence of the improper disposal of liquid food waste, or liquid waste, excuse me, or grease is discovered, the mobile food vendor permit shall be rendered null and void, and the business will be required to cease operation immediately. Vendor shall be cited for a violation as hereinafter set forth, and you'll see those in just a minute. Copies of the zoning permit and all food vending permit shall be kept in the truck, trailer, and cart at all times. It's great if you have a couple of copies because I'm going to hear a sad tale of woe about how rain ruined my permit. That's why you need two or three of them. Lot of us scan things, and then we don't have that problem. And obviously, when we issue the permit, we're going to send it to you in electronic format, so you can print as many copies as there are trees in the forest. Okay. All right, if at any time the vendor's county health, environmental health department revokes or suspends the issued food vending permit, or at Harnett or Wake County Environmental Health Department sanitation inspector finds violation of the food service regulations, town permit for mobile food vending operation shall be revoked or suspended simultaneously. So again, if they get busted in Durham County for failing to meet the standards of Durham County, they bring the truck over here, you're not having a free workday here just because you got busted in another county. If you got busted there, you're busted here. So it's a consistent busting. All right, over to enforcement. This section shall be enforced by law as provided in General Statute 168, 175, or provided in this code. All criminal sanctions shall be up to the dollar limit in GS 14-4A as currently enacted or hereafter amended, or any other similar limitations. The civil penalty for violating this section shall be as follows. Now, this is a non-criminal thing, this is a civil penalty. $50 fine for all violations of parking regulations herein. Okay, now that means, if you are parked on a sidewalk, in a driveway, incorrectly, sitting in a city parking space, just think of something you could do in your car, but you're doing it in a truck that sells food. If you're doing any of that, and you get towed, or you get hit with a violation for parking, $50 is the state cap, so we can't go any higher. All right, however, if, going over to the zoning piece, $100 for fine for the first offense of all non-parking violations contained herein, $300 for second offense for all non-parking violations contained herein, mobile food vendor permit shall be revoked after the third offense, which means you don't come back. You do not come back having, you know, paid for your sins, and then, and then you're back. You literally are just out. Repainting the truck doesn't help. Changing the name might not even help. So basically, it sounds like a lot to go from nothing to a lot, but I'm certainly going to tell you that in my previous employment situation, like I said, Duane's had four food trucks, and we had several other places that had them, and they just seemed to be popping up all over the place. Couple of serious no-no's, we had some people who did food vending in other counties on weekdays and on weekends, and at other times, and yet would bring it home at night, and then plug it into the garage, and we've got a home-based business. That's 100% no-go, so that's like a bad thing. A couple of reasons, not real good to set your garage on fire, probably not a good idea to stink up your neighborhood, pretty bad to just open up a business without a license in your own neighborhood, and it does become an attractive nuisance. And then there's the complaints, and the people who keep gaining weight by wandering over all night. That's my idea of a joke. Trying to be funny. But, but basically, this was, this was a reaction to a request, and the value of having a mobile, mobile food vendor in a non-event situation, okay, I'm sorry, let's start with town events, and let me tell you why they're a bad test for a restaurant, and why this is a better way to test it. When you are having an event with any luck, we're having an artific, we're having an artif, I'm looking at someone who knows what I'm talking about, you're going to have a bunch of people in an artificial situation that is created by an event that is in short duration, and it's going to be over. Every day is not Christmas Eve, every day is not Easter, every day is not spring fling. There may be a couple of days that are that, but I'm going to tell you that the crowds, oh, I'm sorry, great example of what I'm getting ready to say is this, two summers ago, we decided, based on our basic love of pottery, that we were going to wander down to Seegrove, but we were going to go in a non-open kiln part of the year, and we were going to find out what the true Seegrove is like. What the true Seegrove is like is there's two pottery stores that were open, there's a bunch of other shuttered stuff, and there were a bunch of people making pottery out in their garage smoking weed. So I'm going to tell you that Seegrove in the off-season was quite depressing. On the other hand, it looked like a ghost town. On the other hand, having gone back at the height of the market the last time, where they had 200 vendors selling pottery, all of them down the street on Pottery Row, it was everything it was supposed to be. So I'm going to say, the open kiln thing is an artificial situation where you're bringing a bunch of people, you're inviting them to an event that you put a lot of work into, but you're also creating an artificial market. And it is an absolute lie to tell the people who are vending at one of those events, hey, it's like this all the time, there's 3,000 people wandering around. Are there? I don't think so. So in a situation like this, it's a lot easier to test a market, and what we found in Selma, and certainly in Creedmore before that, which was the other place that I worked prior to that, and I've worked too many to talk about, but what I'm going to say is this, what we found out was that when people were able to set up continuously on the same location, it had a couple of good side effects. It gave people surety because they knew where the place was, they knew what they were looking for. They're like, oh, you know, that guy sold shrimp rolls, what's the name of that place? I don't know, Skipper Joe's, I can't remember, but it's in a truck, and the truck's green. Okay, if you know the truck is green, and it's right over there all the time, you know the exact location, it sort of builds in some surety, which gives somebody at least 180 days to test out a market. And those 180 days would include 40 or 50 days where a business is terrible, because in addition to the, you need some days that are, to make sure you can survive. We had a guy who, at my job in Creedmore, and I really hope he's not watching this broadcast, but anyway, because he's probably still has a little doll that looks just like me, and he jams very large hands in it. But anyway, we were getting ready to do some very large street repairs, and this guy had come down from New York, and he had retired from whatever it was he was doing, and he was quite young, so I was a little concerned about him being retired, and he set up this hot dog stand. Okay, so it was really a hot dog cart from Manhattan, and here it is, and it's right beside his van. And it was just kind of sad, I'd walk by every single day, because I'm a, I'm a very avid walker, I walk three to six miles at lunch every day, and I'd go home and walk another three to six miles. And so I'm really into the walking thing, and not so much into the hot dog thing, but I'd go by this guy, and you'd smell these hot dogs, and you'd think you were at the fair or something. And he's just sitting there, you know, with this poor little puppy, and he's, he's just looking at his hot dogs all day. And so we came down, and we gave him one of those nice notices that you give people that says, hey, we're going to be redoing this street, and we're going to have to knock you off your corner for about five weeks while we're tearing the street completely out. And so he read it, and he looked kind of sad, and he said, well, I'll come back. And I said, well, I feel really bad about this. Well, anyway, we repaved the street, and he didn't come back, he was gone for about a year. And I'm starting to feel a little concerned about maybe I'd been a little harsh with him, and, and maybe I should have broken it to him a little bit more gently. So I was in Food Line in another neighboring town, and walked into him, and I just couldn't help but notice the Mercedes SUV that he had out in the parking lot. And I said, wow, I don't know what you've decided to do since you quit selling hot dogs with us, but my God, it's paying off. He said, well, you know, it's the funniest thing. The day that you kicked me off my corner, the day you kicked me off my corner and took me away from my job and told me I was going to be out of work for about six weeks, I called my wife, and I was absolutely distraught, and she said, you know, I work in an industrial park in a neighboring town, and because I want to tell you the story, I'm not going to tell you where it is. But anyway, so she said, why don't you just come set up your hot dog cart on the front entrance of the place where I work? And she was fairly high-ranking where she was, so she could get away with that, and so she went in and she told her boss that her husband wanted to, you know, come and vend hot dogs in front of their place that day. And he said, well, I really hate it, but I'm going to let you do it. Well, what she didn't tell her husband, what none of them told each other, and what we didn't know, was that there were about five food trucks that actually were within about 100 feet of where this guy was setting up his hot dog stand. So his experience over there was that the first hour, he ran out of buns, and so he sent his wife from upstairs out to the grocery store and said, I need you to go buy 100 hot dog buns, and I need you to buy 200 hot dogs, and I need about a gallon of mustard and ketchup, and it wouldn't have hurt to get some relish. And you know that horrible Texas Pete chili, I want that too. So she goes off to the store, and she comes back with these, you know, lunchroom-sized cans and jars of this stuff, and he said, I went through eight of those before the day was out, and I went home with $3,000. He said, and then I got thinking, you know what? I'm not going back. And he said, I've been there every day since. He said, you see that car right there? That's what I'm talking about. So he was in the wrong location, and he didn't have the expectation of, of the down days, the ones where I saw him holding the little dog. You know, I felt kind of cruddy. I never bought a hot dog from him, but anyway, his wife actually grew vegetables, and when she set up a little tent beside it, I thought, what the heck, I do eat those, so. Anyway, it wasn't, it wasn't stinginess, it was cardiac concerns. But anyway, my point is that when you're in the right place, and you're there long enough, you can certainly gauge what sort of interest you have. If you're a store, and you're savvy, and you're really smart about this thing, because part of your plot plan is going to be showing there this thing's going to happen, and where your little 20 feet is, and what your agreement is, the store would be swapping them out fairly often to maintain interest. You know, the, the Lowe's over near me, let's see, when they're not selling hot dogs, they're selling Girl Scout cookies, or, I don't know, giving demonstrations on how to pour patios, or, it seems like there's something going on over there all the time. And then there's another tent where people just basically try to get you to sign up for Spectrum. So there's a lot going on in that parking lot. What I will tell you is, it's extremely lively, and it's a very positive thing, and I feel like like, like attracts like. I honestly believe that when you are looking at an area that is not populated with something like this, this can help. This also prevents people surprising us by showing up down at the park and vending on public property. Reasons for not vending on public property, in case I'm not being obvious about them, should be very obvious. Couple of things, if you slip and fall, you are falling on town-owned property. If you have some sort of incident in which you get burned with the food, or some other thing happens to you, you're still on town property. You're eating up somebody's quiet and, you know, enjoyment of the park. For all the people who would love to have a hot dog down there from a hot dog truck, there's probably 50 people who really don't want any involvement in that at all, and probably would bring their own food. So with that in mind, and certainly you could hold off for an event to do that, this is a way to introduce this into a business in a way that's orderly, that it observes the fire code, because we have at least one of these that sat up here, actually the one that caused the first complaint to come through, was actually one where you could not get a fire truck through there, that was concern number one. They're also on the DOT right-of-way, which was concern number two. That's an encroachment, that's an encroachment that can be avoided. All right, so at this point, I'm looking for questions, and I'm looking for an opportunity to sit down for a second while I re-time a shoot.
Yeah, these do seem like reasonable regulations, food trucks are very popular, and are a good thing, we certainly want to encourage that. Do we have any questions or discussion from the board?
I, I have one question, it may not have anything to do with this, but you talked about the produce stands?
Yes.
Now, is that the same, they have different ordinance?
That's a different rule.
Okay. Now, do they have any?
Yes, they do actually have rules, and there's, there's sort of a variety of those. Our itinerant merchant thing applies to that, and also, it really kind of depends, if you, let, this is an unlikely scenario here, but let's, let's just play a game here. So you own 20 So you own 25 or 35 acres of land and you're a home hobbyist and you grow corn. Because let me just say, there's a world of difference between farmers markets and farmers. If you go to a farm, you may be incredibly disappointed to discover the only thing to eat out there is whatever they're throwing out for, you know, basically whatever corn falls off the corn, that's the edible. But for the most part, if they're growing tobacco, there's not a lot to eat out there. So when you go to a farm or to a hobbyist farm that is actually more likely to be, you know, providing what's actually sold in a farmer's market. If you did that, but you had a fruit stand or some sort of produce stand that was adjacent to your farm, you're actually exempt from regulation from the state.
Okay, now another question.
But you have to have grown everything there.
Okay, I noticed out here that is it different from someone wanting to sell like flowers? Like, they have a lot of people selling Valentine?
Okay, now that still falls under itinerant merchant.
Okay.
And that's a call to Shannon.
And there are regulations for that, is what you're saying, already in place. Right, okay.
We have that covered. This is a whole different category and this is just, this was two complaints in one. The one was the one place just popped up with one, next thing you know, there were two. And then on a Saturday morning, one or two of those trucks surprised someone by showing up at the park.
Well, this looks well researched and put together. We certainly appreciate your work on that. And this will go eventually, we'll, we'll go next in front of the Board of Commissioners, where food truck vendors could have a chance to respond, I suppose, and.
I would hope.
Okay. Thank you. You know, maybe you should tell your story about the guy in the Mercedes to the people at the park. You're in the wrong place.
You're on the wrong corner.
Follow our rules.
But I'm just going to say that.
Yeah.
I'm just going to say that actually that's sort of the story of small business. I, I think that it's very important, particularly in smaller communities, to realize that 65% of all businesses that are actually currently in business started in somebody's garage. I hate to use the example because there's a pretty awful story that goes with it. But please remember that Mrs. Fields and Famous Amos were cooking in their garage. And an awful lot, well, the lady who invented Whiteout did it in her kitchen. So let me just say that, you know, home-based business is actually, is actually sort of the backbone. You start out with a home-based business, you expand too much. You go into a smaller place, hopefully in central business district. And when you become very prosperous, you move just slightly out into the next business district out and then make room for other people to come in. But you do actually have to nurture the small ones. Plenty of people work out of their house, particularly, I mean, post-COVID, good grief, but even pre-COVID, you know, insurance agents, photographers, piano teachers. So there's, there's a lot of things you can do from home. This particular item though, it feels like it's a great amenity for businesses. It also is an opportunity to use an underutilized lot for this. And if it's done correctly, lit correctly, closes at a reasonable time of night. So it doesn't stay out there beyond the point where it makes sense. It's the difference between being hungry and having the munchies, so.
That's right. Randall?
Yes.
Is there, is there already a provision as far as a permit for the after-hours aspect?
You'd have to get a special use permit.
Okay, so there's already something in place for that?
Yeah, if you decide to do that, yes, but you've got to give a compelling reason.
And then the total number of violations of three and then you're out?
Just like baseball.
It doesn't matter which type it is, non-parking or parking related?
Right. Again, you, you're becoming a, you're becoming a public nuisance at that point.
Gotcha. So it doesn't matter what kind it is, is once you get to three?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're a habitual illegal parker, that in and of itself is a bit of a problem. If you literally can't follow the traffic code. But then the other piece of it is, you know, frequently these people do, do sort of circle around. They try out different communities. I'm going to say certainly in the last two places I worked, we didn't have any homegrown vendors. They all came from somewhere else. And it's really tough to make a living doing this. I'll certainly say that. There's, the profit is meh. You have to, you have to love it.
Yeah, a lot of competition.
Yes, although honestly, if every truck's a taco truck, I'm not sure how much competition there is. I love the recipe, you know?
Yeah.
Drop meat, drop stuff, sprinkle stuff or something white on it. Eat it.
Now, the, the food trucks out here, do they have eating area where you could sit down and eat?
The ones that are here in town.
The ones that was at the park?
Uh, I think they were using any place they could sit down or more particularly the sheltered area. Yeah, basically, if you're already, you know, illegally entering the park, I'm not really sure. I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, eating your car, huh?
Yeah, now I will say this, during the pandemic in my own neighborhood, probably the most clever thing I ever saw. And honestly, I was, I was either very happy to see it or I was very freaked out to see it. I'm not sure which one it was, but I went over to buy some incredibly overpriced rubbing alcohol. And there were actually now $7 for four ounces. Remember back that you couldn't get it? Don't you remember? Y'all need to think back. It hadn't been that long, you know, no thermometers, no rubbing alcohol.
We blocked it all out.
Yeah, couldn't buy, couldn't buy my favorite, my favorite whole wheat flour because it was on back order. And then there was some sort of strike. So yeah, it wasn't good. But anyway, moving on along, what I was going to say is there was this one place in, in my neighborhood, in my, literally in my neighborhood. And everything except for, well, no, the grocery store was closed because they're only open a couple of hours. They let old people in for a couple of hours in the morning. I'm an old people. But they let in people over 60 for a couple of hours in the morning. And then they had like a very moderate, and by five o'clock they're closed for the day. And they only had a certain number of people in. You had to mask up and it was, it was really a lot. Because COVID was, was a very serious concern with no hope at the time. And so anyway, this food truck just pops up out of absolutely nowhere. Okay, couple of things, commissary chick, the kitchen is a Mexican restaurant right behind them because it's their truck. All right, so what did they do? They were so creative, I couldn't believe it. Okay. To order, you used their app. So you placed it on your phone. You also paid for it with either Apple Pay or PayPal or Venmo or you tell me, whatever. You pay for it here. You get a QR code. You go to the first window with a QR code so they know who you are or you tell them the name that was on the text they just sent you. And then you drive around to the other one and somebody steps out with gloves and what looked like a hazmat suit and went. And there's your food. You had to get off the premises. The afternoon that I went over to that store to buy the rubbing alcohol, there were 250 cars just circling this thing. And I thought, you know, a couple of things, having a restaurant meal in about three months. Shame I hate Mexican food. And boy, this is entrepreneurial. So I went to some friends of mine who were actually trying to open up the food court over at the JR building and said, you guys keep pushing the date back because of this health concern. I don't know why you don't set up like four food trucks there, use your own kitchen as your commissary. And then you serve your food out there or you hook up with somebody like Grubhub or DoorDash or I Give Up. But anyway, whatever it's called this week and, you know, $12 over the cost of your food to take it a quarter mile to your house. I said, you know, you guys could be fully operational now. You wouldn't be a food haul, but you have as many opportunities as you have square feet in this, in this parking lot to set up food trucks, which is kind of a test for when you can actually get inside. Well, their, their staff did not feel that that was going to work out and did not choose to go in that direction. But I have to say that under a lockdown condition, it was an amazingly inventive idea in my estimation. And again, for me, okay, it took a couple of things out. Was that sanitation grade? I don't know. Go walk into that restaurant and go look. It's on the wall. You can see it for yourself. Did you have to be concerned about the staff? No, because they were all the people still wearing their uniforms with the name tag right here. You already know. You know, her name's Haley. His name's Robert. We know this because it's on their uniform. And, and, you know, you didn't have to worry about the, the flavor of the food or the quality because, you know, you'd already been there before they shut down for the pandemic. They actually stayed open in that method for probably seven months. So anyway, I mean, I just feel like there's three or four really good opportunities within this, but I think the missing ingredient here right now is regulation.
Would you like us to adopt a resolution here today or just have it noted and move on to Board of Commissioners?
I would like to have you all basically just move to, to recommend approval.
Any further discussion?
You got to get a motion first.
All right. Could we have a motion?
I'll make the motion on that.
That a motion to recommend these regulations to the Board of Commissioners? All right, all in favor? All right, it's unanimous?
Perfect.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate your work on getting those regulations together. You did a lot of work on that and it's appreciated.
Thanks a lot.
Any old business?
None.
All right, if none, then I believe we will adjourn. Thanks, everyone. All right, welcome to the new members as well. Good to have you.